The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm gonna call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are in attendance with the exception of Councilmember Vaughn. A quorum has been established. Council, we have before us tonight the minutes of the regular meeting, City Council meeting of July 24, 2017. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Okay, seeing none, they stand approved, council ideas be considered, council any ideas be considered? If not, we'll go to consent agenda, council, your wish? Consent agenda, Councilmember Foltz. Councilmember Foltz makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Leifeld. That motion is now before the body, is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have a warning of contracts as a public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing in regards to declaring property as excess of the northwest corner of Pleasant and Highway 55. John, our community development director is here. John, welcome to the meeting, very glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. As the mayor pointed out, we have two actions for you tonight. One is to hold a public hearing to consider vacating or to consider declaring a piece of property excess. This property is at the northwest corner of Highway 55 and Pleasant Drive, and then the following action to declare it excess. You may recall that we looked at this at our last meeting, we ordered the public hearing at that point. The property itself is about .65 acres, showing up very lately on this map here. But Highway 55 being here, Pleasant Drive, there is vacant properties to the east and west. Across the street is Pleasant Hills Library, the county campus to the northwest here. This is a piece of property that we had not contemplated for sale in the past. However, we have been approached by an entity who wishes to purchase the property itself. Before we could take any action to consider sale of the property, our city charted to stipulate that we do declare the property as excess. And looking at the property itself, we acquired it in 1973 as a part of a plat for Whispering Oaks First Edition. Really have had no public use for it at this point. We have had the planning committee of council review this as well, and they concurd that they do not see any public use for the property and recommend it going forward in a potential sale of the property. We're not looking at the sale tonight of the property. What we are doing is declaring it excess, so at some point in the future, we could consider that for sale. So at this time, you can hold a public hearing, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John, I'm going to take the liberty of opening up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open, is there anyone here who wish to speak to this issue in regards to declaring that property at the corner of Pleasant Highway 55 as excess property? Anyone wish to comment to that? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, let's take that issue before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As John mentioned, the planning committee of the City Council did meet to go through this, and at that meeting, we did have representatives from the folks that are interested in purchasing the property. We got a chance to look over the preliminary plans. We looked at the parking, we looked at the entrance off of the frontage road, and so forth, and we did not see any reason to, you know, question anything that they wanted to do. It appears it's going to be a dental practice that would be coming in there, and so it, it's not gonna be a McDonald's or another gas station. And that was good to hear. It'll bring a few jobs into Hastings, and it will follow the guidelines that we set forth for construction of the property. There should be some matching up with the First National Bank and the library, and of course, the county government center. So it was a very pleasing opportunity for us to meet with those representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie, did you have a comment?
Your Honor and council, just for point of clarification, tonight's action is simply declaring the property as excess. We, there is no plan before the council to consider at this point that would be, that would come forward at a later date if and when we come to an agreement on a selling price. So just point of clarification, thank you.
Thank you. John, what's the current zoning classification?
The zoning of the property right now is C or R3. It's a residential zone, medium density residentially zoned property. So there would need to be a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment for this to go forward for a commercial piece of property. But looking at surrounding pieces and the area, we would be supportive of that.
Well, thank you, you anticipated my other question, so thank you, I appreciate that thorough answer. Thank you. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you. John, as Councilmember Balsanic had pointed out, looking at the size of it, it's small. Easement wise, there's no issues as far as offsets from the highway, from the road, I mean, just looking at it. Can you build a building in a parking lot in that particular location without encroaching upon the surrounding? I mean, it's surrounded by streets, so what happens there, are we okay?
Sure. It's an excellent question. When you look at the property, you wonder the same thing. There was a concept plan submitted for a potential use of the property, we have reviewed that, we feel that it could be developed, albeit on a limited basis, for the use that is contemplated. So I think it could be, but it is very small.
Councilmember Lot?
Thank you, Your Honor. Any costs that we should be considering? Infrastructure, utilities, or anything like that that we might wanna take into consideration to make that a usable space?
Sure, the, with the potential development of the property, you know, the, most of the utilities are present, though the water is a little bit distant on that. That's been one thing that we have been in discussions with the potential purchaser as far as how that would get there and how much that might cost. But generally speaking, in development, we, the developer is responsible for providing the extension to the property, through the property, so that the next property could develop in the future.
And we have a motion? Okay? Councilmember Balsanic makes that motion to approve as a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Brock's. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Now, next, we have a resolution for the City Council to approve industrial parkland credit and sale. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Before you is a map of the property in question tonight, it's a 1.36 acre parcel within the Hastings Industrial Park. 31st Street is to the south, Lightborne Court is here, a little bit east of Enterprise Avenue, so towards the southeast portion of the Hastings Business Industrial Park. There are two actions before you tonight. One of them relates to the sale of the property, that is to recommend sale of the property under the land credit program. The second is a site plan review of the potential building itself. So I'll go through those here individually in a moment here. So we have a purchaser of the property and developer, Lightborne Properties, that is proposing to construct a 10,500 square foot retail service warehouse building. One of the primary tenants of the building would be CrossFit HSC, who is currently renting a facility directly to the west there. They would take up about 6,000, 7,000 square feet of the building. The remaining 3,000 square feet would be used for storage purposes there. You may recall that we had a special use permit to consider the use of the property for a retail and service industry for CrossFit that we looked at at the June 5th meeting, and we did approve that, as a necessary item for the development of the property. Hedra did take a look at this as well on the land credit application. On July 13th, they recommended approval of that per the land credit. And taking a look at the calculation, I know we haven't had a property sale here in quite some time, so I'll give a little bit of recap and review of the program itself. Within the industrial park, we do have a program that offers land for a dollar, provided that you meet certain properties for land value on the development of the building and development of the site, as well as job creation for the property. And so what I have up here is a kind of a calculation of the credits that would be earned on the property. The amount that the property is worth right now under current land value is about $98,000. We have credits that are calculated a couple of different ways, one for the estimated building value and one for the payroll credit. The building value is based upon the building valuation, payroll credit on the jobs created, which they're looking at four jobs for the site. If you total up the credits, it's about $81,000, less that from the amount of the property, there is about $16,700 that may be owed in five years. What we do is with, at a five-year period, we will go back and do an official calculation of the building valuation and the payroll at that time. If the payroll is less than $97,000, as anticipated here, there would be a payment due at that time of $16,700. If at that time, the building valuation is higher and/or the payroll is greater, then that balance would be reduced, or it might not be a balance at all at that point. So that'll be something that'll be brought back to the council and authorized at a later date. So that is the land credit calculation, so we are recommending approval of the sale per the land credit calculation, based on these calculations here. What would happen at this point is upon your action, we would have transfer documents and agreements that would be drawn up by the city attorney and recorded for the property for the sale itself. Looking at the building, this is a site plan of what the building would look like itself. Got about 10,000 square foot building and parking in this location. The building itself is primarily metal. They have added brick along the lower three feet on the front side of the building. Windows are around the building on all sides, also a different colored band that stretches around the other ends of the building. When you take a look at the architectural standards and take a look at other buildings in the industrial park, it is consistent with those. Building itself, parking, parking is adequate for the site, looking at the retail and also for the warehouse uses, and the landscape plan meets our minimum planting requirements onsite as well. They're not planting any pole lighting for the site, they will have wall pack lighting on the building to help illuminate some of the parking lot areas. So at this time, we are recommending approval of the site plan. The site plan was reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting last week, and they did recommend approval with that, with limited discussion. So we do have Eric representing the Lightborne Properties group tonight. If you have any questions for him, I can stand for any questions as well. Again, we're looking at two separate actions tonight, one for the sale of the property under the land credit and one for the site plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, John. Council, let's take up first the resolution regards to the industrial parkland and credit and sale. What's your wish on that particular item? Councilmember Brock's makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body, is there any discussion to that motion? Councilmember Balsanic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wondered if you could give an explanation as to what is retail service? And what, what, they're actually doing retail, selling it out of the building then? Or are they supplying retail to other companies?
Sure. I'll give a little explanation on that one. Within the industrial park district, anything that's termed retail or sales, or retail and service, excuse me, is, can only happen via a special use permit. By the service, we're not necessarily talking about industries that would serve retail, but more provide services to the public. And with a fitness facility, we term that as a service type of industry. People come in there, they're provided a service, kinda like a barber shop, a beauty shop, those type of items. So that's the rationale for the service entity portion of it.
Okay? Is there any further discussion, council? Councilmember Brock's?
I have a question about the special use permit portion of this regarding the solid staging and trucking. Does a special use permit have any hours of, of, that the trucks can be moving? The only reason I ask this, it's sort of random, is that we have had neighbors who are in the neighborhood just south, or sorry, east of this location that have called the City Council to talk about truck traffic and road conditions and dirt and dust and all kinds of things earlier this year. And so I just wanna make sure that company, that company had a special use permit, and they had to move between certain hours of the day. Is that same situation applicable here? Are those same conditions on this special use permit?
Sure. With the, the trucking aspect of it, there's no special use permit required for that. Because this is an industrial district, transportation and manufacturing are permitted uses, so there is no special use permit requirement on that. They are bound by noise laws that we have, traffic laws that we have in place citywide on there, but nothing specific for the use within the park.
So I guess this then is just a comment maybe for you, Eric, is just that the neighborhood is sensitive to noise and traffic and trucks in recent months. So when this operation gets up and going, that's just something to be aware of, that they are a little sensitive.
Come from the west, right? Is there further discussion, council, on the resolution? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, I was just curious, how much land is available in the industrial park? When you put up that, the map of the industrial park, it looked like that whole cul-de-sac was still available? So that's, oh, okay, so it's that cul-de-sac and then behind the cul-de-sac? Those are the lots that are available for this kind of?
Yeah, councilmember, we, you're correct. All the lots are on the cul-de-sac, which are generally about one to one and a half acres, as well as these lots over here, which are about two to three acres are currently available. We also have land to the northeast of Spiral and Enterprise that can be made available. We've been reserving that for a potential larger user.
Okay, all right, thanks, I was just curious.
Okay, council, we have, we have a motion before us, is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next is the site plan on the CrossFit for 2950 Lightborne Court. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Leifeld makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brock's. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Leifeld?
John, I have one small question on number seven, where you talked about the lighting, that there won't be lighting in the parking lot. Hours of operation for CrossFit, I think, will that be an issue for nighttime traffic in the parking lot, or?
Yeah, with the building itself, there's, there's gonna be lighting on the, on the exterior of the building to shine into the parking lot. When you, when I take a look at number seven there, that's more directed towards pole lighting and probably not well placed within this resolution here. But what we have, we have that condition in there more for pole lighting to make sure that there's not spillback onto adjacent properties.
So is there any sort of ordinance that we have in town requiring lighting in parking lots? If there's nighttime traffic or services, or how does that work?
We don't have a, an ordinance requirement to require lighting, but if you do provide lighting, we have illumination levels that need to be met for it.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Okay? We have a motion before the body, is there a further discussion to the motion? If not, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Thank you, John. Next, we have, tonight is the presentation of the 2016 comprehensive annual financial report. And Melanie, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have Chris Knopick with Clifton Larson Allen to give that presentation.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting, we're very glad to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me a little bit at the council meeting tonight to go over the 2016 audit results. As we go, feel free interrupt me if you have questions, and, or you can hold them till the end. Either way is fine with me. As far as just a real brief agenda, we'll introduce you to who the audit team was. We do have what our audit reports are, some financial results, and then just a couple of other items at the end. As far as the audit team goes this year, it was myself as the principal, John Lorenzini, Lucas, and Troy were all returning from last year. Chris, John, and my, or, sorry, myself, John, and Lucas have all been working now with the city for either all five or six years that we've been, Clifton Larson Allen has been serving the city as an external auditor. And then Troy, Aaron, and Cindy were all new over the last couple of years as well. As far as the actual audit results go for the city, the city did receive an unmodified or a clean audit opinion on the financial statements, so that's the best that the city can do. We also do look at internal controls as part of the audit process. As part of that work this year, we did identify one material weakness, which was more based on just kinda the way the accounting works. This year, with the turnover in the finance department, Diane took a more forward role in preparation of the financial statements, with Rebecca doing it in the past, and there was just a reversal of a prior year payable that was missed in one of the funds. So nothing, nothing out of the ordinary as far as we're seeing a downgrade or anything like that in the actual services. It was more just of a one-off that we found as part of the audit process this year reversing a payable. We, we did not identify any significant deficiencies, and we also did not identify any legal compliance issues as part of our audit work this year. There were two new accounting policies that were implemented by the city this year. GASB statement or Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 72 and 77. 72 result, revolved around investment disclosures, and 77 revolved around tax abatement and tax increment financing disclosures. So nothing on the face of the financial statements, just within the notes itself, the, to the financial statements. As far as the actual financial results go, this first graph is looking purely at the general fund, so the main operating fund for the city, and it's looking at your total revenues and expenditures. This does include both transfers in and transfers out as well. As you can see, this year, also corresponding with 2015, total revenues and transfers in were just slightly above of your expenditures and transfers out. Big drivers in that are gonna be the increase in the tax levy over the last year, and then also there were some grants that came in this year as well. Increases on the expenditure side were mainly surrounding increases in salaries and benefits. As far as where the general fund is on the reserves, comparing it to the unassigned or unreserved fund balance within the general fund, as you can see, it's just over forty, about 44% roughly. When you look at that, it's actually slightly above the city policy. City policy has it between 30 and 40% of your next year's budget. Budgeted expenditures for 2017 were pretty much right in line with this, so it's actually about 44 and a half percent when you look at it compared to policy as well. You're still well within the range that the state auditor's office recommends for municipalities. They recommend upwards of closer to 50%, so you're still well within the policy there as well. As far as just other items, the city did receive for 2015 the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's a multiple, but it's an award that municipalities can apply for by submitting their comprehensive annual financial report, and it goes to third-party reviewers across the country that are members of the, of the GFOA. We have several within our firm, but what we do is we look at those to make sure that the financial statements are complying with all of their basic reporting requirements. It was the 19th consecutive year the city did receive that award. So I give kudos to the finance department there, especially as the, the turnover within finance and Diane taking a more important role in drafting the financial statements this year. So very, so very good there. As far as new accounting standards that are gonna be coming over the next couple of years, there are statements 74 and 75 are the two that I indicated on here, but the nice part with that is the city already uses the, the method of the valuing the post-employment benefits that the city has. You're using the, the method that the new standard requires, so that's good. In the city also, when the original poll, or the original standard, which was 45 now, and that's about six years ago, when that came on board, it gave municipalities an option to amortize in the liability over a 30-year period. The city did not take the amortization period at that time either. So the full liabilities on the books are using the correct cost method, so you're not gonna see any drastic changes in your liability, it's already on the books. So that's better than what some municipalities are gonna see coming up in a couple of years. So the only big difference you'll see is it's gonna add some more notes, some more pages of notes to the financial statements. In case you're an avid reader of the financial statements, you're gonna get about five, six more pages there. So outside of that, there are some other, other ones that we discussed in the finance committee meeting earlier tonight that are looking out another three, four years, but I didn't include those just because they're not as prevalent right now. So that's the, the brief presentation we had. I'm open to any questions that anybody on the council may have for us as well.
Thank you, Chris, really appreciate your presentation. Find that very valuable information, council. We'll open up for discussion, is there any questions or comments, like one we'd like to give? I just wanna ask you, Chris, you're right, we're, we're very proud of the fact we're able to get up to, what is that, 44% or so with the reserves? We've been working on that a little while, since, since 2008, now that's a number we always look at. How's the city, in, in your general opinion and in your analysis of discussing this, and trying, and our efforts in trying to, we already have an excellent bond rating? We'd like to see it get to the next level in bond rating? Any, any thoughts or comments on that?
Not knowing how the bond rating agencies work, the big thing is, is you're controlling what you can control right now. You're controlling the, the financial reporting aspects, the, the tax levy, you're doing all of that stuff. It's the, it's the stuff that's not necessarily financially driven that's gonna potentially be your hang up there. It's, when the bond rating agencies come in, they're looking at development, they're looking at if you have industrial users, commercial users. Those are the areas where you're probably getting hurt on your bond rating a little bit just due to the limitations of the, of the size of the city right now. But as far as financially looking, the city, you're doing good. You had the one internal control comment this year, that was actually the first one in a few years that we've had. I'd expect it's gonna go away pretty easily next year. Another year of experience drafting the financial statements is gonna make a world of difference in that world. So you're controlling what you can control right now, you're controlling your, the tax levy in that side of it. It's gonna be those other non-financial aspects that, that are gonna be the hang up there for you.
Some things out of our control to, to a certain degree.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, is there any further discussions or questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion needed to accept the report? Okay, just, all right, thanks a lot, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And your team, I know I had a chance to visit with some of you throughout the year, through the auditing process, it was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council, is comments from the audience? Are there any comments tonight from the audience? Anyone here would like to speak before, speak to council? This is the opportunity. Okay? Seeing none, council, announcements? Announcements? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to announce again, as I did last week, that I am going to have two, what I'm dubbing Emerald Ashbor Coffee Talks. It's just my first, my first go at it of trying to have a little community meeting. And so I'm going to have two sessions at the Breakaway Arts Center down in the lower level, and I'll have some coffee pot available for folks to come on in and grab a cup of joe. And so it's gonna be this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., and then the following Sunday, which is August 20th, at 11:00 a.m. And so just going to provide some background information about Emerald Ashbor and the impacts that are anticipated within our community, and what our current ordinances say about tree disposal, and hopefully on Saturday, I'm going to... And hopefully, on Saturday, I'm going to have an arborist there. His name is Tom Peter. And I'm still working on some technical expertise for the following Sunday. But, so hopefully, we'll be able to answer folks' questions that they may have about Emerald Ashbore.
Excellent. And you don't have to live in the first ward to show up, right?
Of, of course not.
Okay, that's great.
Thanks.
It's always good when we get good information out. So thank you for that announcement. Is there any other announcements, Counsel? Okay, I have a few announcements. First of all, my goodness sakes, on August 16th, Councilmember Lund, you're going to have a birthday. And how old are you going to be on the 16th of this month?
I will be legally able to vote.
Really? Wow, that is something. Maybe I'll have to take your oath all over again. No, that's great. Congratulations and happy birthday. And another distinguished member of our Council will be having a birthday as well. And that's on Friday, August 18th. Joel, happy birthday. And I, I'm waiting for you to, you know, shoot under your age in golf. And I think we're getting closer. Are we not, Councilmember?
Your Honor, I noticed at the 3M championship that one of the players shot a 60 on, on Friday, I believe it was. And in terms of what my age is and, and whether I'm going to shoot it, it's nobody's business.
There you go, there you go. Well, I can't wait to our next golfing outing, Councilmember.
Well, and, and I need to add, I almost had a very early birthday present today. I was in a tournament down at Boulder Point and missed a hole and won by about a half inch.
And if you had made that, which number would that have been? Because I know you've made some.
That would have been number seven.
Wow, unbelievable.
So I, I'm in a tournament tomorrow at Majestic Oaks.
Maybe tomorrow.
That's where I got my fifth hole and one.
There you go.
So I'll be walking on hallowed ground at that particular time. Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Lund, Councilmember Balsanik, happy birthday in the next couple of weeks. On Tuesday, on August 8th, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. On Thursday, August 10th, Hedra will be meeting at 6:30 here at City Hall in this chamber. On Monday, August 14th, the Planning Commission will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall. You can tell City Hall's a busy place, can't you? On Tuesday, August 15th, the Heritage Preservation Commission will be meeting here at 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, August 16th, the Transit Committee chaired by Councilmember Vaughn and with Councilmember Balsanik and Leifeld will meet at 6:30 at City Hall with Dakota County to discuss the Red Rock Corridor. And after that, the City Council will hold a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So Counsel, put that, make sure that's on your schedule. On Thursday, August 17th, the Public Safety Advisor Commission will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. I just want to put out a good shout-out for them on all their efforts on the recent national night out. They did an excellent job, and that was a fun night. I enjoyed that evening very much. And then on Monday, August 21st, the City Council will be holding a workshop at 5:00 p.m. to discuss the 2018 budget. And then after that, we'll get together here in chamber and session. The City Council will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. Again, that's Monday, August 21st. Counsel, we have no further business before this body.